Yeah, I'll be ready.
All right, I am calling to order the October tenth, two thousand and twenty four Lexington Planning Commission meeting. And the first I of let's see, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
And opposed and the motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the September twenty six, two thousand and twenty four meeting. Anybody have any comments? Concerns? Or a motion?
I I just had a really quick question, but and it's because my memory doesn't serve me correctly perhaps, and that is when the question came up about um how many new offices, I want to say that uh John Driscoll brought the question up, how many new offices would be over at the Rockbridge Building? It says in here five, he said additional five or six. Was that was that? Okay. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I move to approve the September twenty six minute minutes as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
I.
And opposed, motion carries. All right, on to new business, the zoning ordinance amendment two thousand and twenty four dash O three cottage housing. Arnie?
Likely won't have anything, but we just go back and citizens comments and meetings and.
Oh goodness, I'm so sorry. I checked off the wrong button.
There, but.
Thank you so much. All right, so go going back in time, we're gonna hold on new business and uh are there any citizens comments on matters not on the agenda? Hmm, it's a quiet group out there tonight. Okay. Hmm, I'm gonna close that section of the agenda and move back on to new business with Z O A two thousand and twenty four dash O three and Arnie, do you have a staff report for us?
Good evening, everyone. Um, if you could just indulge me since it's been three meetings since we haven't talked about cottage housing, there's gonna be a little bit of a review, which is gonna help me just as much as anyone else. Um, on page one or page eight of your overall package, just sort of a review of those um items for each of the dates. So beginning back in April, we had that presentation just overall of what cottage housing is. Then the next meeting went through regulations for Winchester. Then the next meeting, we overview the railroad cottages, and then we had the review of the company code for that language. And I should also mention that on our website, under zoning text amendments, in particular for cottage housing, we have all the minutes there for all of these meetings. So if you just wanted to go and refresh or review, just to see where we are in the process. Um, it was helpful for me just to sort of catch up when I was reading them yesterday to figure out where we are.
Sorry, could you say where that is again?
Is on our website, the planning department's webpage for the city Lexington N V A dot gov, go to departments and then the planning department. And then we have a number of headings there for zoning ordinance, comp plan and whatnot. And then further down on the page, we do have a heading for zoning text amendments and under cottage housing, there'll be a PDF link and you'll have all the minutes. Kate's been keeping up with those. Then also the supplement, I believe, was added today. So the supplement with the drawings and whatnot that we've been referencing is there as well.
Right, thank you.
Then we went through the Third Street cottages and the zoning code for Langley. And then the next meeting, we talked about Max Ivan Koff's proposal for that corner of Houston and Walker Streets. And then we began to start considering options, and then we talked about cottage density and cottage height and existing nonconforming structures. And then we had some supplemental materials and that next meeting, which was in August, just to sort of help consider um when where it might be a P U D, if it might be a rezoning, that type of thing. And then we got into some other meetings and haven't been able to meet for a while. So if you wouldn't mind heading over um page eleven, just as an example, and I'm gonna ask you one question here, we have
Thank you so much.
In our purpose and intent statement as an example, that is something that we've already covered. Actually, I think that's the first thing that we covered. And we still have the sample language there from Winchester and from Shoreline. And then we have the version that we've put together, at least as a placeholder at a minimum for Lexington. Is it okay if we start deleting some of the stuff that we don't perhaps need, which is the example from Winchester and Shoreline? The packet's getting kind of long. We don't mind keeping it there because we even though this is a placeholder and I think it's a fairly solid language, you might still review it, might still change it, and we're happy to keep the other examples there if you want. Or we can start getting rid of some of the examples when we've already made decisions, even if they're placeholders. Do you have a a favorite or opinion?
I think it helps to to get rid of it, just to pare it down, especially like on that where we're feel pretty good. At least that's a start.
Okay, we'll start doing that. Then as we make our way through, we'll get rid of the sample language that we've already referenced and where we've made decisions, or at least temporary decisions or placeholders.
Does does anybody else have any concerns about that?
Apologies, sure. I'm two minutes past the five minutes I thought I would be.
Trouble. Arnie was just asking if if it's okay if we pare down some of this stuff that we've already sort of said yes. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, so that's just an example of we've already discussed and on page twelve, that's the sample, the sample language, that's the language that we've agreed to at least up to this point. And then going on to density, which is subsection C, beginning on page thirteen, we have a number of examples there, and we started at least to go um sort of populating our own table on page fifteen, and that's when we ran into the desire of having more background information. It couldn't really figure out density unless we had a better idea of some of the other setback issues, um open space requirements and other sort of dimensional issues. And then how that might affect density. So we have some placeholders at least in for the minimum number of cottages at four, the maximum at twelve, and in the R M, I think we had eighteen. And then we also talked about this factor of one point three perhaps for minimum lot sizes. So that's all included there on page fifteen in that draft table. Then going over on to page sixteen, talking about nonconformities, we do have some language that we decided on there again, at least as a placeholder. Um, oh, that might be worthwhile to mention at this time, particularly since we have new people. What we're generally trying to work towards is a draft ordinance draft language for the entire cottage housing development so that we can then advertise that for a public hearing. So even if we have some sort of placeholders in place now, we're gonna have it back to you once we have all of our placeholders so that you can review that draft. Then you'll finally at some point green light and then we'll advertise it for a public hearing. We will hold the public hearing. You'll undoubtedly hear something at the public hearing from all the public input. Then you may go back and tweak something, change something here or there, and then ultimately you're making a recommendation on that language that then goes to council for a public hearing. So we're drafting currently and then we're gonna review and may tweak, and then it goes on for a recommendation. So you will have opportunities later to review and change what you decide. And then building height on page seventeen, we have a number of examples there and on page eighteen, um at least for now, it says no build.
Sorry, uh, just because I'm sorry, apologies for being late. I'm just catching up on the page numbers. So I'm currently with you because we have.
Hmm, sorry, I'm referencing the whole packet page number. So on page eighteen, just an example for height. Top right.
Top right is the.
Packet page number, correct.
Okay.
And we had talked, the other ones have a story and a half, one story, and we had decided again, at least for now, that no building in the proposed development will exceed two stories nor be more than twenty five feet in height. Uh, we have not talked about variations in building design. And so that and we jumped because again, we want to talk about some of those dimensional issues, and that's what we're gonna get into tonight. So if I could ask you to flip over to page twenty four. Cottage floor area. Are any questions before we jump into this particular subject? Okay. Um, so for cottage floor area, how big of a cottage do we want? How do big of a cottage do we want on the first floor? How big of cottage do we want on the second floor? How big of a cottage do we want overall in size? Those are the types of things that we're trying to decide in this section. Um, for what it's worth, Winchester has an objective. Sometimes I think the objectives are nice to have in there to sort of give some direction on why we're doing it. Um, so the objective as an example for Winchester, structures in cottage housing development shall be designed to be single story or single story plus loft. Again, for us right now, it's two story, so it either we wouldn't have that type of sentence or we would amend it appropriately. And then residences in cottage housing developments are primarily intended for one and two person households and their occasional guests. I would like your opinion on if you think that is true. Is that something we are trying to sort of work towards is houses that really are only to be occupied by one or two and an occasional guest? Is that worthy to have in there? And is that type of direction that you want to provide?
I'm not inclined to add that. It just seems too exclusive to me.
Yeah.
On the other hand, if we have, if the houses get too, I mean, I guess we'll we'll sort of factor this in in the in the footprint size. But I mean, I think part of it is that if you're putting a whole bunch of these in a residential area, you don't want to necessarily increase the the density of the number of people living in an area by, you know, twice.
Hmm.
I don't know. It I I wouldn't mind if we could just keep it in for now and.
See what see what the public says. Okay, I'm not inclined to put it in, but whatever.
Anybody else on that particular point?
I I think that keeping it in will help others to understand that this is not meant to be a high density insertion in a traditional neighborhood.
You're gonna have limited parking.
Either one.
You'll have limited parking in these places, so many more parking spots than
That's true.
A household.
That's true.
Guests, I mean, it's already.
So as.
Residential area.
As the space gets larger, if we're at fifteen hundred square feet like the railroad cottages were, then we can expect more people to be in there and expect more parking would be required. And okay, um, and then the next sentence, I'm a little bit I've struggled with this a little bit in the sense that I'm not quite sure what their intention is. Maintaining the maximum square footage of residences in cottage housing developments is necessary to prevent overbuilding of the site and to not exceed available off street parking. I guess they're saying if there is a maximum, well, there will be a maximum size that you should be at that maximum size or close to it so that you don't have too many smaller units. And I'm getting, I think I'm reading into this. I'm not quite certain about it. And that also not to exceed the available off street parking. So I'm not would is that something that you would like to include if we think we know what exactly what it means?
Yeah, I I it it seems a bit ambiguous to me.
Yeah.
Maintaining the maximum, do they actually just mean that? I mean, do they are they trying to encourage builders to build to the maximum? Is that your read on that?
That's my take. I don't.
Take it as you need to set a maximum to keep from overbuilding to.
I would agree with.
And I think the wording is quite odd, but that's how I would.
That makes more sense.
Yeah.
And that that does deserve to be in there. Yes, that does deserve.
Clean it up.
But does that need to be in the objective or?
As we already said it.
Although I guess if you're trying to say, you know, I mean, you could just say there is a maximum square footage.
But it brings up the point that Tori brought up, which I think is a very good point on the the uh limiting the number of people because I just say you like weather burn was originally designed for kind of a fifty five plus. In fact, I think it was actually in the bylaws at first. But now they have families in there and it's a great neighborhood. But parking's an issue. And yeah, so you'd wanna kind of
Yep.
Stayed upfront if we're not gonna build in the parking, but it it is meant for that. And part of the reason is what you said that because parking's an issue.
Right. So so in other words, we want to keep it to so the maximum square footage for the residences is so that nobody in the future says, oh, well, we can just expand into this unused space for parking. Is that the is that what you're saying?
I take it as building lots of um smaller units, therefore each unit has a parking requirement. You know, if if I can build eight to the max or ten minis. And and so is that how it's, is that what you're?
I I think that this statement is really hard to parse.
Yeah.
Maintaining a maximum. And that's necessary so that we don't overbuild or exceed parking.
I think instead of maintain should be setting the maximum.
Yes, I think.
Or limiting perhaps also, limiting the maximum square footage of residences in cottage housing is necessary to prevent overbuilding and not to exceed available off street parking.
Yeah. Limiting, yeah, that's a good word.
We generally okay with that?
Yes.
Good. Then A subsection there, the maximum ground floor gross area for an individual principal structure in a cottage housing development shall not exceed eight hundred and sixty four square feet. And B lofts, or in our case, it would be second floors, because we are allowing two stories. Um, and second stories can be no more than fifty percent of the net floor area of the main level. I think we'd had a fair bit of discussion where we were generally okay with the ground floor being a certain size and the second floor being smaller in size.
Yes.
Hmm.
We're gonna go ahead and and make that part of the regulation so somebody couldn't make this first floor the same level as the sec- the same square footage.
Yeah.
Well, but you 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 were you were asking us to imagine that that now is gonna make it a higher priced product. Because, right?
Was that from my previous statement that generally a story and a half is more expensive to build than a two story?
I thought that's what I remembered.
And that's true, but we're not requiring story and a half anymore. And now it's a two story, but it wouldn't be a full second story on top of a one story. It would somehow have to be reduced a little bit. And I'm not sure what was shown there, but an example of that is in our supplement. I don't know if that's what you were showing.
No, I was actually just, I I just drew a little drawing that had a two floor house. But ha- only half of it was two floors.
This is a in the supplement, I'm not sure we've had the page numbers or page twelve, the red thing is a two story house that has the upper floor not as big as the lower floor. But it's not that idea of it being underneath the eaves where it's a story and a half.
And it was more to get that articulation of have an interesting design and not be so overwhelming, I guess.
Yep.
So having gone through just some of the basic parts of this, are there any one of these that jumps out at you perhaps more? I'll mention one or two other things perhaps. Um, in Abingdon, they also said a minimum. Do we need to set a minimum? Let's say you set a maximum of a thousand square feet. Do you also want to say that there's a minimum of five hundred or six hundred so that yes, you do get an articulation and a variation, but perhaps not too big of a variation in sizes? I'm not sure that it's valuable. That's I think Abingdon was the only one that actually said a minimum. So that's why I'm bringing that up as a outlier.
So sorry, we're are we where are we about the eight hundred and sixty four square feet in the Winchester? Is that, are we feeling like that's too small? Of a footprint? I mean, if we're talking, so how many bedrooms are, can you typically have any, what this would be is about a twelve or thirteen hundred square foot house?
You think about um at least get three. If you have a thousand or twelve hundred square feet in a typical ranch house in the sixties or so, you can get three, three small bedrooms, one or two bathrooms in that size. And we are talking relatively about smaller structures. I presume smaller bedrooms, not your palacious McMansion type bedroom. So if you're sizing them appropriately, I think in that, I think you said twelve hundred or so, you could get up to three bedrooms.
And if we're back to the to that, the number, if we're talking about a one typically one to two person house and occasional guests, do we really want to encourage these houses to be bigger than twelve or thirteen hundred square feet?
And that's also on the larger size from I sort of recall, and it's been a while since we've gone through um some of the other examples. But I think the fifteen hundred in the railroad cottages was at the upper end for sure. And then we saw a lot more in that seven, eight, nine hundred square foot total.
It was the fifteen hundred total or was that ground floor?
I think that was total if I remember correctly.
It would be kind of nice to have maybe twelve hundred, change that to twelve hundred. Your maximum would be eighteen, which is kind of big. But mostly so you can get encouraged some one story buildings so that they're more accessible. Because we always, I feel like we run into that problem in Lexington, we build. We encourage building up too much to where houses are not accessible for a lot of people.
Uh, I wonder if it's worth saying that you can either have one and a half, you know, one floor plus a this, sorry, I don't, I'm not quite sure what the terminology is for that, where you have a half. The second floor is a half sized floor, whatever this is. Let's read one.
Full second floor, but it just happens to have a smaller square footage or floor plate than the first floor.
Okay, so if that is um so you can either have that or you can have a s- a slightly larger square footage if you are all on one floor. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It I mean, if if we're trying to sort of move this towards a certain number of people, but we still want to have people have enough room on the first floor for one floor, like let's say retirement living. Um.
So you could change, you could you could say, you know, the ground floor area of twelve hundred or whatever, even fifteen hundred, but then on B, say no more than fifty percent or a total square area of whatever.
So I I would say that a fifteen hundred square feet, I don't know how whether that would work out in terms of the footprint, just in terms of the numbers. We'd have to, we'll have to run the numbers once we get to the to the place where all of the other.
Can someone can you understand in Arlington?
Uh, would you mind talking?
John.
The difference, sorry, between one and two, the maximum ground ground gross area for individual principals shall not exceed a thousand, the maximum total square foot. Oh, that's the difference. Okay.
Yeah, kind of exactly what we're talking about, right?
That that's kind of helpful, I think.
It's it seems to me that if you allow um over twelve hundred square feet, you're not really getting the cottage housing.
That's kind of large.
Yeah, I mean, that's that seems pretty large to me, too.
That's a regular house.
Yep. Agreed.
That might work in Arlington or other places where they have much bigger houses and also in fifteen hundred square foot is a cottage. But around here, you can definitely argue that there are more modest sized houses that are around town are built bigger than that.
Than fif- fifteen, you mean?
Yeah, I mean.
That's a pretty good sized house.
Yeah.
I mean, you can pack a lot in there of fifteen hundred square foot or even a thousand square feet if you're creative.
Right. And I think that that is the point is that we want creativity in.
So does any one of these examples provide more creativity that you would prefer? Regardless of trying to set what the actual maximum is right now, if we're not able to do that, maybe just sort of the language and the creativity. And it sounds like we do want to overall perhaps limit the second floor to something less than the first.
Yeah, I mean, Winchester.
Abingdon covers it pretty well then because they give you a thousand for the first floor, total fifteen hundred and nothing less than eight hundred. So.
Do we need to set a minimum? I I still don't fully understand why set a minimum.
Unless you end up.
Tiny houses, maybe?
Is that a problem?
I'm not so sure that that's necessarily a problem. If it's too small, then do you have enough um livable area? Do you have enough storage space for yourself and your stuff? But I guess people are self selecting into these smaller units, so that's something that they would have to figure out and deal with.
Because we'll set a maximum cottage density. And a minimum lot size. I don't know that it matters if you have.
So it would, it might get to be looking a little bit piecemeal if you have a bunch of tiny houses. I mean, tiny houses can be really small. So let's say you have a bunch of tiny houses, twelve, let's say. I think that was the max number. And then you they're they're really small. And it might just look it might, I mean, my guess is that that would be a visual.
Yeah, right, it could be.
Issue.
Yeah, I think that I think having a bottom density or or square footage is makes sense. I mean, Debbie and I lived in an eight hundred and fifty square foot condominium for twelve years, two bedrooms. Um, tight, you know, that that's small. Um. I, that's what I'm visualizing when I see eight hundred, eight fifty. So so we in a way, I mean, they all say the same thing in different ways, that there's a ground floor, then there's a fifty percent addition on the top floor. And um the Arbington one is just kind of clear. It's a thousand fifteen hundred and.
But but it does not. I don't think it says a max, so it we would, I think, want to add the second floor can be no more than whatever percentage of the net floor area of the first floor. Because that's not accounted for unless you max out, then you're at fifteen hundred square feet, so that's fifty percent.
Yeah.
But but you could do eight hundred. It there's, I don't think. Oh, no, it's plus a loft. How big can a loft be?
We're talking about Abingdon?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the first number there, the maximum ground floor is a thousand. And the total is fifteen hundred. So if you're maxing out at a thousand, then you're only having a five hundred square foot loft.
Sure, no, but I'm talking about it. Let's say you choose an eight hundred square foot.
So we don't know. So your point is we need to provide that direction.
Yeah, I I just think that it for for a thousand square feet, there's a formula. For eight hundred square feet, can I have seven hundred square feet in my loft? Yeah.
Yeah, according to the way, yeah.
Right. So if we're trying to actually change the the top floor, I think we want to have that percentage. Like section B on Winchesters.
Ah, I see, interesting.
So perhaps just to maybe entice you into Port Townsend. At the cottage quarter, it's very similar. You can tell that um Winchester really pulls from the Port Townsend code.
Ah, okay.
And there's a lot of similarity there. So again, this for the objectives, but in the number one, so I'm on the bottom of page twenty five of your overall packet, the ma- maximum ground floor shall be, and then flipping over if for at least fifty percent of the unit. So here we get some variation on the ground floor, which may help with our earlier discussion of having that bedroom for perhaps older folks on the lower floor. Um, so fifty percent of the great units, the ground floor may not exceed six hundred and fifty square feet, but in B or fifty percent not greater than eight hundred square feet. So that might sort of help that discussion we had a moment ago. And then the net total floor, sorry, and C, the net total floor area of each cottage shall not exceed one and a half times of the area of the main level. So there you have your.
You know, fifty percent.
The ratio or whatever that may be.
And and do we do we need to identify that we want the fifty percent of the units to be of a smaller size? I mean, that does provide that variability, which is nice. Visually variable. Visually variable.
Does uh, make it a little more expensive, depending what the builder wants to do, you know, if they wanna. I don't know. I don't, I, I don't feel like we need to regulate it quite that much.
I, I guess what they're avoiding is having a cookie cutter.
Yeah, right.
So I think I'm hearing we're okay with two story, we're okay with the ground floor being larger and limiting the second floor to being some ratio of the ground floor. We don't know exactly what that is yet or the overall size. Um, does that sound to be generally true?
Can we put fifty percent as a placeholder and that, does that work for you guys?
Is any one of these jump out more than others, just as an example or sample?
One practical question I have is since we know Winchester's never been built, which one of these has actually been built out?
Good question.
Or Townsend for sure. Langley for sure, Shoreline.
Yeah.
Falls Church. And we have really detailed plans for the Falls Church one, if we need to refer back to that. Might not have them with me though. And then the next question, as you're mulling that over, is ultimately what maximum size we are, we are going to have to figure out. You know, I'm hearing some variability here. So, and I'm not sure if there's something else that we could provide to perhaps help with that. Cause square footage is going to mean different things to different people based on their experience in an eight hundred and fifty square foot two bedroom condo or where you first, your first house, you know, so it's, is there anything that we can provide you that might help with understanding what a thousand square feet is versus eight hundred versus twelve hundred?
For the Port Townsend uh, guidelines where they say fifty percent of the units may not exceed six hundred and fifty square feet on the first floor. And then it says, again, also for no more than fifty percent, the ground floor may be up to eight hundred. We seem to, I think, be thinking that a thousand square feet would be a nice size for the first floor. And uh, why don't we, why don't we say for ours that it may not exceed fifty percent of them may not exceed six hundred and fifty on the square foot. But then also for fifty percent of the units, the ground floor may be up to a thousand. So just change it from eight hundred up to a thousand. Then you have, do have some variation. I mean, that's an idea.
Is that a thousand on just the main floor or a thousand total?
No, a thousand on the ground floor.
So it could be then with fifty percent.
Big house, I think.
That, that is, so, so we had, you know, I'll, I'll give through my experience in our house. Many, many moons ago was a two floor and it was a two thousand square feet. So the bottom floor was a thousand square feet. So that, that was a chunk, you know, it was a chunk of house. And if you had twelve of those in an area, it would be.
But we're saying only, we're only going to allow fifty percent of the houses in that area to be.
Six of those.
Yeah.
But then they can also have a second floor that's fifty percent. So, so then that's, I don't know, that, that's just feeling pretty big.
I, I guess I hate to put a number saying fifty this, fifty that. I think it should be kind of market driven. We want, we want it to be successful. We want it to be what people want it to be, but we want it to fit in as well. And I think we can because it's a CUP, I think we will have better control. And once we get to some of the setbacks and stuff on keeping a, a appropriate buffer between the neighboring residential. Yes, I'm just, I don't feel knowledgeable enough or comfortable enough to try to set.
Yeah, I hear you.
Multiple limits.
So can we set some placeholder numbers and sort of see, because
Well, then if more people are comfortable with the ground floor maybe up to eight hundred, just use those for place, placeholders then. Eight, up to eight hundred for fifty percent, but you don't even want to put fifty percent.
I kind of, I kind of like back to the other one saying the bottom floor can be a thousand square feet and the top can be fifty percent. But if we want to then set a total square footage, I'm okay with that too. If we think fifteen hundred's too big, I'm okay with that too.
So then you would go to eight hundred and four hundred, which would give you twelve hundred.
No, I want to make the first floor large enough that people want and can have one floor living.
What if, what if we said you could choose between a thousand square feet uh, and have it limited to one floor?
Yeah.
Or you can have an eight hundred square feet on the bottom, but have a, a half sized second floor. Those are your two options. So you can have a twelve hundred square foot if you go to the second level. Otherwise, it's the max of a thousand square feet, one floor. Does that make sense?
I think so. If I can um, show you something in the Falls Church zone. As an example, in the underlying portion, every dwelling unit should have a maximum gross floor area of a thousand. I think what you could do there perhaps is um, dwelling units may have a maximum gross floor area of a thousand. Or they may have a maximum gross floor area of eight hundred with a fifty percent allotment for the second floor. Something along those lines where I think you're setting a one floor maximum that is larger, but it could stay only one floor.
Right.
And then the floor plate for something else other than that, that's two stories is automatically smaller, but allows the fifty percent.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was.
Well, I'm.
Sorry, sorry, which, which areas?
Falls Church has the underlying portion there. I changed it, Leslie. I'm not. No, so it, there it starts out, every dwelling unit shall have a maximum gross area of a thousand square feet. But we don't say everyone, they can either have a thousand square feet on the first floor without a second floor. Or alternatively, they may have up to eight hundred or whatever we set for a ground floor with a second story allowed up to fifty percent of that main floor.
Yes.
I like that and I think that achieves what Leslie and.
I think what's also nice about that, Arnie, is then it, it would attract people that maybe want single story, they're, they're aging. They want to live on one story or younger people that just want a smaller footprint. And they may want a upstairs bedroom and they're able to use the stairs fine and, and they want to be creative with their lower level.
Yeah. Um, I, I really do like the, in the Falls Church, the last sentence about the, the required
Yeah.
Porches not being included.
That's, I think, important as well because we need to figure out, is that going into open space? Is that going in? Where is it? How's it getting counted? So I think it is valuable too.
That's a good question. That, uh, that eight sixty four, did you confirm, is that, is that standard building materials? Is that where they get that number?
No, actually, I don't know.
Cause that would be a good, if that's the case, if there's a rational reason for using that number, it'd make more sense than just saying eight hundred, which could be more expensive.
Yeah, that is very specific.
It seems like it has to have a reason.
But again, that's the one that's. But if we, if, if we pull from maybe where we think they were pulling from, which again is the Port Townsend, you know, they're talking, again, they're breaking up fifty percent of this or that, they have eight hundred square feet. So why did they jump to eight sixty four?
Yeah.
Building materials would make some sense.
With a porch?
Eight hundred and.
Or, you know, that's a possibility.
Eight sixty four is divided by six, is divisible by sixteen. So maybe that is.
So I, I, I like how we're all coming around to this alternate Falls Church language.
Yeah. Same.
For what it's worth, I thought we were maybe talking about some things that were smaller. So not to say that a thousand square feet is too big, but if I could show you some floor plans that are in these in these developments that have a first floor bedroom that are less than a thousand square feet. Would you like to look at some sample floor plans perhaps?
Yes, I would love that.
Cause a lot of these um, by Ross Chapin are specifically for seniors or first time home buyers. So they will have that bedroom on the first floor. Again, it's not a spacious bedroom. It's that twelve by twelve or sometimes even smaller than twelve by twelve and with just that one closet, not that walk-in closet. Um, so it is perhaps possible to get smaller than a thousand square feet. But we can provide you with maybe a dozen or less floor plans just to.
I think that would be helpful. Cause I, I, I do agree. I think we were, we were talking about smaller, trying to, trying to make them more affordable. And, yeah.
But none of these really say anything about sort of accessibility necessarily. So let's just make sure that we can still get that bedroom on that main floor in such a way.
Yeah.
That people with those mobility issues have that ability.
And, and so we're just, before we move on, I just want to make sure that we're, we're keeping, even though Falls Church does not have it, we are keeping the first two sentences or something like them from the Winchester example.
The objective? Okay. Would you like to keep the objective and then go straight into that underlying portion of Falls Church that we have since modified?
Yes.
And this is where it's valuable when we bring it back to you, that you have that ability to review what we sort of Frankenstein together.
If, if I remember back to the early discussions, even when Pat was here, when we started this, when you introduced it to us, we liked the fact that Winchester had the objective.
Yeah, absolutely.
As an introduction.
Cause it helps people understand the intent.
Yes.
And you, you think eight sixty four, is that for first floor? Is that still too large, like going off the Winchester?
Kate, could you show the third street cottages? If I'm not mistaken, and it's been a while since I've looked at, if you go to Ross Chapin's website, he has a couple, several dozen floor plans. And I'm reasonably sure that the ones that Kate's going to show you.
Yeah, Third Street, their total square footage was eight fifty.
So those are, just to show you.
Uh, doesn't have a picture.
Smaller.
Table, you're right.
And that's total. So some of those have lofts in them.
Okay.
Yeah, we're probably in our minds thinking too much, single family.
Arnie, are, are all of those under eight sixty four? Is that what you were saying or?
It's in the.
Yeah, in the pictures, they all, okay. Okay, yeah, yeah.
And we have eight fifty total. And I'm not sure the breakdown, that's total. So I'm not sure what they had for upper and lower, but yes. Okay, um, so it sounds like we're okay with the drafted language. We'll provide some floor plans just to see if we can if we need to adjust or not. Anything else on cottage floor area?
Oh, and we're going, we are going to include the the porch line. Now, do we want to have a, a percentage required of, of each of these? I'm just looking at that picture and it looks like that is maybe something that is included. I can't quite tell. But one of them is different. No, maybe two of them are different. So the one in the bottom, now maybe that's the community building, is it?
Yeah, you definitely have a community building in there with a couple accessory things to the community building. And then the other one, two, three, the other eight are cottages. And some of them are one story only and some of them do have a bit of loft space.
Okay. So, so this, this would be I, I guess one of the things that we want to ask ourselves is are, are the people who live in these houses, are they going to want more privacy? You know, a little bit of privacy from their neighbors with a little bit more yard or do they want more house? Because that's a lot of house on that land. I'm sorry. Okay. That's good to know. And by successful, do you mean that they sell quickly and turnover a lot? So they don't stay on the market when they're? Okay.
Overall, these have been highly successful developments in that they sell, they pre-sell and they stay with a high market um, value. And I think it's mainly because. They're just the thing that's different that people may be seeking. And then you have to ask yourself, well, how quickly do you saturate that part of the market? But there are a lot of folks, I think, that are either looking for something smaller just to simplify um, or to start out with. Uh, so.
Or they need a single floor living.
Been successful.
But I do think we can get both affordable housing and this. If we leave a little leeway too on some things. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure what Max's, Max says his target group is more entry level, more affordable. And that's a pretty small lot. So you would assume, even though we don't, we don't know what his house sizes are, that they're going to be fairly small, so hopefully affordable, but. Okay, that'd be nice.
Okay, moving on to Jay, which is yards, getting the, some of the things Shannon, you were just talking about. So first yard setbacks and then sort of open, not open space, but common area and private space um, are the next subject. So on page twenty six, we have this idea of setbacks from exterior lot lines. Twenty six?
Twenty six, the pages.
This page, okay.
So if you think about one parcel, cause typically we have, a lot of us live on a single family detached house in a separate lot, so everybody has their own lot. This is different in that you're going to have one lot with all of these within. So we're only talking about the setbacks for the exterior portion, not the separation from house to house or cottage to cottage or cottage to accessory buildings. We're talking about sort of just around the perimeter. What is it that we would like to see as far as setbacks go? In Winchester, um, they provide perhaps too much discretion, but just for fun, exterior lot line building setbacks in cottage housing developments are based upon the allowed density of cottage housing as well as the small sizes of the structures. Flexible setbacks are allowed per the discretion of the building official and planning director to obtain approved site design and to avoid impacting existing physical features of the site such as trees. If I had more of a design background, I'd hold my hand up for that, but um, I don't, so I'm not going to hold my hand up for that type of discretion. And then strangely enough, they just throw in a table, which you don't know if that's suggestions as far as, because apparently the building official and the planning director are going to have discretion. Um, but we could use those setbacks as a starting point. Um, Falls Church is another example. Um, for dwelling units and community buildings, in other words, community guest houses, clubhouse is twenty feet from a public right of way. So if we have just the front of this development that we're showing is a public right of way, it would be twenty feet from the front property line before a cottage or an accessory building could be um, located. Ten feet on the sides from a side property line, twenty feet from a rear property line, provided however, that where the cottage housing development is adjacent to a residential district, side yard setbacks for dwelling units or community buildings shall be increased from ten to fifteen feet. So if we have another residential, that gives you a little bit more of a buffer there on the side where you have other residences or residential, was it residence or residential zoning districts, it bumps it up again from ten to fifteen to provide sufficient space for the landscape buffer. Semi-detached units, I'm not sure if we're going to need that part. So I'm not sure we're going to allow semi-detached. Cause again, one of these had semi-detached, but they didn't provide a definition. So we don't know exactly what semi-detached is. And then distances between dwelling and structures shall meet all applicable requirements in the life safety code. So that first part of the sentence is talking specifically about what the exterior setbacks are going to be. And then the other one, distances between buildings are going to be set by building code.
So distances between dwelling and structures, is that, what are we talking about here? What are the structures?
I presume it's going to be in, if you have a common building, a common house, and I think some of these are also accessory structures with some storage in them. I think those are the other structures that aren't specifically dwellings.
And are, is parking allowed to be in the setbacks? It is, isn't it?
We, it is currently. We, it is currently in our code, but.
We could limit.
You need to figure that out here as well. Well, I think that'll be a little bit more clear when we get to the parking section, I think.
And do we have the map of the, of the piece of property on Walker and Houston?
I think it's similar.
Is that one of the?
Supplement.
Yeah. There it is. Okay, thank you. So, so according to this. We would have a twenty foot setback from Houston and from Walker. And. From. The house next door or behind, well, the, the house on, the other house on Houston.
The way we currently have it, it, you're correct in that. Twenty feet from a public right of way, so that would be Houston, Walker, as you've already stated. Um, the twenty feet, oh, sorry, the ten feet from a side property line. Is that side that's at the top of the page, which would mean as you're heading towards Miller Street. That's where you would have your ten foot, because that's the side.
Even though there's another property there?
Oh, and then, uh, the second part of the sentence, I guess, is what you're getting to is bumping it up to fifteen.
Yeah.
Correct. And then twenty feet from a rear property line, in this case, the rear is that house. That is further to the, I guess, northeast, running downhill along Walker Street.
On Walker Street, but that would also be fifteen feet.
Well, that's twenty feet to the rear property line, so that you get bumped up only on side yard setbacks.
Bring me along with you, please.
I'm not following that either.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, um, go back through that again. For dwelling units. And community buildings, twenty feet from a public right of way. Ten feet from a side property line, twenty feet from a rear property line, provided however. That where the cottage housing development site is adjacent to a residential zoning district, which this is all residential in the example that we have. Side yard setbacks for dwelling units or community buildings shall be increased from ten to fifteen feet. To provide sufficient space for landscape buffer. So that's only on the one property line, because we only have one side setback in this case. As we're heading down Walker Street, that house is actually, that's the rear property line, so there would not be a bump up, but if that's already set at twenty feet. Where the side goes from ten to fifteen in this example, because we're adjacent to a residential zoning district.
They don't both qualify as side yards?
Our definition, for what it's worth, is if you are on a corner lot. The frontage, that's the least amount of frontage is your front. The longer frontage is your side, that's just the way our, our code reads that way, other codes don't particularly read that way.
But, but these are two separate properties.
Oh, true, but we would also presume that they're going to be combined, because they have to be sort of aggregated. So we don't have that intervening property line that then would affect setbacks.
Yeah.
May I make a suggestion, because this is a good exercise for us? Is, uh, one, assume that it's a combined lot.
Right, yep.
And then Barney, walk us through, just label the sides, so Walker Street would be one. Two, three, four. See what I'm done?
I do.
Okay, and just then let's talk about the setbacks.
I can't see your one, two, three.
One is Walker Street, two is the adjacent parcel.
Wa- Walker Street is easy, and Houston Street's easy, because that's twenty.
Okay.
Twenty feet from the public right of way. Now, your number two, I think, which is going down Walker Street.
Yes.
That is a rear property line, according to our zoning ordinance, so that's twenty.
So we've got twenty, twenty, twenty.
And then that long property line that is closer towards Miller Street.
Yeah.
That is a side, it would be ten. But as was pointed out, this is adjacent to a residential zoning district, so it bumps up to the fifteen. So you have fifteen on that, towards Walker, you have, and then the three others are twenty.
Okay, thank you, that's the.
And can, I know we haven't gotten to parking yet, but can you use any of that twenty feet on? On the street for parking, is? I'm just wondering.
Oh, the, the front setback along a, but if it's in your front yard, it's not on the street, it's in your front twenty feet. I, I would hope that we don't, because in general, you're supposed to put these off to the side or the rear. And I'm hoping that there's something in the. Parking requirement section that prohibits, we will, some of these also have little diagrams that come along with parking and shows that they're off to the. Suggested that they're off to the side or rear.
Right.
I don't think it would be terribly appealing if you have, and then the only way to get to a parking lot in a twenty foot is head in parking.
Yes.
And that's.
Right, well, and, and, and it seems like in this area would be dangerous. I just want to.
Yeah.
Make sure that we're.
The layouts.
Yep.
I do think you need at least, I, I thought those setbacks are pretty good. I think you need at least fifteen feet, or you can't have a, a tree.
Yeah.
Was kind of measuring trees, and that's kind of the minimum for a, even a small but decent tree.
Yep.
So overall Falls Church, yes, as written?
Yeah.
Maybe without the semi-detached.
Part that says semi-detached dwelling units.
Since we don't know what that is.
Yep.
Excuse me, but if I remember from previous, did, do we have? Did Max provide us, or whoever, some detail on what he wanted to do on that particular?
Oh, is that a couple concepts?
He had three or three and a half concepts, as I remember, and we put one in your supplement, at least remember.
Yeah. I'm just, because, I'm just curious to some of the discussion, if you take fifteen, twenty and twenty feet setbacks. What's left in the center as total square footage to do something with, but.
And he has a red line going through sort of a, and I don't know what those dimensions are. Say, red dash line, which is clearly your building envelope and, you know, showing setbacks, but I. Can't read it, or it's not provided.
Okay.
And, and, and he's calling these tiny homes. Do we know how big they are?
Well, I think that was the issue, um, unless we tried to scale them, and it would be really hard to scale and give anything accurate. I don't think we know the sizes.
Okay.
While we don't want to organize. Your ordinance around one particular development, it's helpful to illustrate.
It is very helpful to, I mean, I, I know what that house next to it looks like. On Walker Street.
Sometimes you can also scale off, I'm sure Arthur, well, I presume Arthur did a parking space. Typically, they're eight, nine, ten feet wide, and about anywhere eighteen to twenty feet in depth. So if he did these parking spaces at twenty feet, that gives you a sense of.
That's right.
What the twenty foot setback is.
Yeah, until Leslie's point on the trees. Um, they're within that setback.
Oh, and he does have that written right there, setback line, he, he put that on there.
Do you see a dimension, though? That's what I'm struggling with at the moment.
No, but he's calling it the setback line.
Yeah.
The, the houses look like they are. About twenty feet wi- wide.
So we're kind of matching up.
I think I assume.
Anything else on overall setbacks?
I, I think that what this, what this is telling me is that. If this is the number of units he felt like he needed to, um, to have in order to make this functional. Money wise, um, we, we might need to allow pretty small units.
Yeah, and I, if I remember correctly, he was a little bit more than double the density of what we would allow in that R one zoning district. So generally speaking, we're talking about double the density. And then having size limitations and whatnot, if I remember correctly, again, it's been a while, he was a little bit over double the density.
But to Shannon's point, would that begin to tell us what? Going back to the ground floor, plus the second, the half of the upper store. What was he thinking in these? They're all pretty much the same, aren't they, except for the.
They, they look the same, yeah.
And if you flip over, again, this is a concept, so we have to be a little bit careful on what we take away from it. But if you flip over, they're only showing, uh, what I think is one story.
That sure looks like it, yep.
This was again, one of three or four concepts that they had put together.
And it, it's actually. Probably works out if we're, if we don't allow the parking on the street to count, maybe eliminate a house and add some parking. But it's, it's still good to have a visual. Work through that.
Anything else on building setbacks from exterior?
No, the setbacks seem. Less controversial, yeah.
Yeah. We'll move over then to cottage housing, building. Development, oh, sorry, cottage housing development, building separation.
Wait, so we're, we're, sorry, we're going to go with the Falls Church.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I thought that's what.
I just want to confirm.
Falls Church, no semi-detached. We'll go forward unless you. Having amendments.
That works for me. And then you'll take all these other ones out.
Correct. And so the next subject would be cottage housing development, building separation. So we've talked about the separation between buildings and the exterior property lines, and now sort of internal. How much separation do we want between buildings? Some of these have twelve feet, some of these have ten feet, some of them simply defer to the building code. And I asked Steve Bock, our building official, a little bit about that today. And there is generally a five foot for each building, so ten foot. Separation, but you may recall that. Falls Church had six or eight feet, but they had fire sprinklers in each one of them. So then Steve gave me this table that I'm not able to quite. Understand completely, but he did explain that depending on the type of construction as well, so generally speaking, ten feet in between buildings. But if you make the buildings the E's fire resistant materials, you can get a little bit closer. If you have sprinkler systems, you can get even closer. So I'm not sure if we want to get that parsed that much into it. Either we could say just according to building code and leave it at that, or we could say ten feet. Is a maximum, or the minimum of separation.
Why did Falls Church put twelve feet? Why, why did they put twelve feet?
If I remember correctly, theirs was less, because, uh, Falls Church, and the bottom of page twenty-eight as an example. Um, minimum yard requirements, and then the underlying section, distances between dwellings and structures shall meet all applicable requirements. And fire and life safety codes. Since they sprinkled, they have a fire sprinkler in each one of those. They were able to meet, um, some requirements in the building code that allowed them to go less than ten feet. And I think it was either six or eight, and I can't remember which it was. Wherever cottage is correct.
Looking at Abington, that's where it says twelve feet. I, I thought that was still Falls Church, sorry.
That worries.
That's actually Abington, okay.
So just an example, again, Port Townsend have an objective there, structures within, sorry, page twenty-nine. Structures within cottage housing development shall observe minimum setbacks from other cottage housing development structures to avoid overcrowding the site. And to maintain a sense of privacy within the cottages themselves. Number one, all buildings within a cottage housing development shall maintain a minimum separation of ten feet from cottages. Within a cottage housing development, measured from the nearest point of the exterior walls. So that tells you they could be a little bit closer with the Eves, if you have an overhang or Eve, then they're going to be a little bit closer than ten feet overall. Accessory buildings shall comply with building code requirements, so then there, you're again leaning on the building code. Maybe if we go back to the Third Street ones, Kate. Those accessory buildings are closer than ten feet to one another. So they must be in, sorry. The ones. This is a accessory building, that accessory building, and this is the, I don't know. Clearly see there's less than ten feet from here to here, if compared to the cottage, so it must be fire resistant materials. And meet the code requirements for that.
I, I think having the ten feet between the cottages is. Seems important for privacy.
And landscaping too.
And landscaping.
I like the cottages that had a lot of landscaping, and I hope we.
Right.
Leave room.
Right, it makes them feel more cozy and protected somehow.
There will be some other requirements when we get to private open space. Where we have common open area and then private, so there's bills, there's still some language in there that'll. Help with that separation or the feeling of separation.
So are. John, do you, and, I'm not sure, do we have any, do you all?
No, I'm just looking, I mean.
Ten feet, twelve feet.
It's between ten or twelve feet, depending on which. Uh, ordinance we're looking at, so. And if, Arnie, if we hear the ten feet is the minimum. Here, um, sounds good.
So shoreline is eight feet.
Whoa, that's too close.
Yeah.
Way too.
Agreed. I, I like spelling that.
We haven't borrowed anything from shoreline yet, so let's not start.
Exactly, we reject them, sorry. Um, so. What's your sense between the, um, the language in Port Townsend and, and Abington, Barney? Aside from the numbers.
Where's my avenue?
Abington is the one at the top of page twenty-nine.
Oh, sorry, the header is throwing me off, it lost. Building separation structure within cottage housing shall observe minimum. I think it's the same, I mean. I don't immediately see any difference between those two.
Okay.
And again, that just shows that there's a lot of.
Just going to say, there's somebody's cribbing here.
Yeah.
Taking, yeah.
So i- i- do you feel more comfortable at twelve feet or ten feet? That seems to be the distinction between most of these, if we throw out shoreline, that is.
I'm, I'm okay with ten feet. In between them, although I am also willing to consider twelve. I, I. I think the, you know, the more footage we put between them, so that counts as. Does that count as common space, or does it count as space that belongs to each house? How does that work?
You'll see in a little bit, there's, there's going to be common area, minimum.
Yeah.
And there's also going to be private open space.
Right.
So I think it's mainly going to fall within that private open space category when we were that area between cottages.
So people could plant arborvitae's or something that's going to grow up high.
One thing that we had seen, and I'm not sure how, if that goes in the covenants and restrictions, but typically, if you're going to nest these houses close to one another. You'll see the three at the top, as an example. You don't see any windows on the right hand side, on the left hand side of the structure. So they have three skylights in that lower bump out, and a skylight in the upper. But that is intentional, so they don't have a view or a window directly into what's more that side yard for the o- other neighbor. Who has windows, and that's really their private space. So they're nested, so you have no windows on one side, and then, so that's the way to handle that from a design perspective.
And is that something that is regulated, required, or is that something that's by developer? Because that seems like it makes it more, much more appealing.
I think a lot of that's in the design, I'm not sure that we're going to get to that level of regulation. But we are going to provide setbacks, we're going to provide minimum private open space. And then hopefully a good designer does something like that.
And I would say with ten and twelve, either of those would be fine, but you want to allow some light in, that was part of the thing about not having the too big of a house. And, uh, and then so you can grow even grass or something in between, because if it's any smaller, you can have a mud pit.
That's another point, maybe to push you towards twelve. That's another point, maybe to push you towards twelve, which I wouldn't think I'd be saying, but. A lot of these are story and a half, so it was easier to get light in, but if we're gonna go to two on some smaller portion of the upper. Then does that necessarily to get that sun down to the grass and to the plants that you want in between, does that then push you perhaps? To twelve?
Maybe twelve.
Maybe twelve.
They're close enough. And, and I think Weatherburn, I walked it, but it was a couple of meetings ago and I thought we were gonna talk about this. And I, I think it is in that ten to twelve foot range between houses there. Yeah, they're pretty close.
If I remember, I think there may be five foot side yards.
I think that's what it is, yeah. Right.
Okay, so.
There's, those are mostly two story, not story and a half there.
So that means they're ten.
And it's actually, it's a very nice, it looks nice, so yeah, it's enough room that you can do something. And you, you know, the minimum grow grass. And you're not right on top of each other, but they are close, but they do have windows on, both sides looking out, but. Allows light in the house.
Right, right. Um, so, so are we talking twelve feet then or ten feet?
I'm okay with ten, but what, it makes it so close.
Right.
Any else?
I'm okay with ten.
Minimum of ten.
Okay, ten it is. Can we, can we go with the language in Abington and the, the formatting? I like the one and two.
Oh, the splitting.
The splitting them, yeah.
Nice and clear, so.
Okay, just make it more clear.
The twelve to the ten and we use Abington.
Yep.
Okay. How much more time would you like to spend tonight?
Well, you know, we're, how many more sections do we have?
We prepared common open space, which is the next one. We also have examples, I think, for the private open space, and I don't think we provided much more beyond that.
Just do common open space. I think that's gonna take a little while.
Why don't we see, you never know if it's, if it's fast. It'd be nice, since there's nothing else on. Move this along.
Yeah, no, we, this one has fallen behind.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't mind.
Okay, common open space, just reading from Winchester, since it's the first one. Objective open space that is commonly owned by all members of a cottage housing development. Is an important feature of any site design. It is intended that the open space be adequately sized and centrally located. With individual cottage entrances oriented towards the open space. A common open space, a minimum of four hundred square feet per cottage unit of common open spaces required. Parking areas, yard setbacks. Spaces between buildings of twelve feet or less, which we might have ten feet or less potentially. Um, private open space and driveways do not qualify as common open space. B proximity to common, so then they have some. Distance requirements that at least twenty, or sorry, at least fifty percent of the cottage units shall abut a common open space. All of the cottage units shall be within sixty feet walking distance measured from the nearest entrance of the cottage. Along the shortest safe walking route to the nearest point of common open space. So common open space shall have cottages abutting at least two sides. And the last one there, for purposes of cottage housing, common open space. Shall be the central space that may be used by all occupants of the cottage housing development.
So now Winchester though is the one that's never been built and, and the numbers don't work.
Right, so I think they pulled again directly perhaps from Port Townsend.
Which has been built though. So, um. I'm sorry to do this, but I would love to include the objective from West Winchester. For the, um, building separation, actually maybe even for all of them. Just so that we have that objective. I just think it's so helpful.
On Winchester, you mean the objective?
The objective, maybe.
Yeah. The other thing I, I would agree with you on the, and on, under B. Two, for the purposes of cottage housing. Common open space shall be the central space that may be used by occupants. And in a way, I like the definition of that.
Yep. Agreed.
Yeah.
So we like their objective. And we like B two.
Yeah.
Okay. So how much different are some of these others? So Falls Church also has four hundred per dwelling unit.
And they get a little bit different in their B in that the proposed development includes, so they're starting to mention other things that aren't in the previous one. But we don't have a requirement thus far for guest houses or clubhouses or other common buildings necessarily.
Yeah, that just makes it more expensive and, and yeah. It's fine if they include it, but I don't see that we should.
I, I don't, I, I would agree with you, Wesley, I, I'm not.
But it does say if.
Perhaps to point out that in the Falls Church one, this is a list of community amenities. So they're talking about the common open space, they're talking about guest houses and other things. Um, shared space and then in the last one, they're talking about sidewalks. So it's a little bit of a different format than where other ones are just talking about the common open space.
Community amenities, I see.
So would that need to be in a different section than the guest?
Well, you could certainly leave it here, or you could. I think we need to address, I think so far we don't have the requirement for those, other places had a requirement of, at least I can't remember how it was written. Of having some sort of community building or other amenities. We have not chosen thus far to do that. Um, so I don't think it's necessary for it to be here, cause again, they're talking about amenities in general. Um, but if we want this language, we could either leave it here or find a more appropriate location if it's something that we wanna keep. The other ones do not, I think that all the other ones are just talking about common open space. Just as an example.
I kind of, I'm, I mean, I like having the language there because it's conditional. So it gives some flexibility. It certainly would mean that you could have much smaller houses. And still have it work because you could have a place where people could have their guests come and stay. Which I think would make the smaller, you know, these much smaller format houses more appealing. Which is not to say that we would force it, just saying that it, it would be nice to have it be an option.
So am I hearing that perhaps you would, uh, in addition to the other things that you've argued, said you wanted to keep the objective, um, B two and the one above. Perhaps also keep, um, in the Falls Church example, both B and C to bring those forward for now. And B again is about the guest houses and the other amenities and the C is specifically about sidewalks.
Yes, definitely think that it should have sidewalks along all public streets. I mean, particularly since they have a twenty foot setback, I assume that the sidewalks would be inside of that twenty foot setback.
Well, that's a good question because most sidewalks are on the right, in the right of way.
So.
Not on private property.
So let's just use, since we have it up. Houston Street. Is there? I, I know there are no sidewalks on that side of the street.
In Houston, but on Walker, there's sidewalks on that side.
No, I don't think there are on Walker either.
On Walker.
So it could be, um. Proposed development shall provide sidewalks along a, a pub, so it's more about the commitment. Not necessarily that they're on their property, perhaps they're just paying for the sidewalk if there isn't one on public property.
So my, my question about this street, the, this property is. If it's in the right of way. Is the right of way, does the right of way on these property, on this, this corner property go up? To like where the grass is or where the dirt is right now?
No, actually, I think that one works okay because there you see the dotted line is actually the property line. So at least on Walker Street, the sidewalk that is shown there is out in the right of way. I think the one along Houston Street is gonna be on their property, not in the right of way. Just for an example of one of each.
Yeah, we make.
Like that, that shows where a sidewalk, requiring a sidewalk makes sense if it ties, especially if it ties together your parking.
Yeah.
And stuff. You don't really want a sidewalk that doesn't lead to anywhere, but.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's a great point, Leslie, and I, I had the same thought, cause if you looked on Houston. The sidewalk is on the other side of where, so if we went and said sidewalk on public right of way. So that would be on both sides of the street. The sidewalk is actually on the other side, so you would have a sidewalk to nowhere around the development.
However, it is, it does allow people to walk a little bit farther along. The property if they're trying to cross the street to Houston, let's say they've got kids and they're going to school. Or whatever, the playground, um.
I just know walking around here, I find myself sometimes walking along and then the sidewalk stops at the, at the property.
Yes.
And it's more, what would, and it's too nuanced for this discussion, but actually you'd wanna crosswalk. There, so you could cross the street to get to the sidewalk and then continue. Because given our street sizes, our, our cross section of our streets, we don't have enough room for two sidewalks. A sidewalk on each side generally.
And unless it's in the. In the private property, so, okay, sorry, we got off, but. So, so does that, does, can you require that? I mean, I guess we could for the C, since it's CUP.
I'm sorry, I wasn't following.
Sorry.
On property or off property?
On the property.
I think we can, um, and just to go into C a little bit more in depth, and we're talking about sidewalks perhaps more than. The open space, but the proposed development shall have sidewalks along all public streets adjacent to the development. Where sidewalks presently exist.
There you go, Arnie, you go to.
On the same side of the block.
Yep, sorry.
Or where safety considerations such as significant vehicular traffic or the need for safe pedestrian pathways to nearby public uses require them such as schools. Et cetera.
So you could use that language to say it needs to be there, it does need to be there, or. The crosswalk needs to be funded, so.
Yeah, I think that's, um, I like that now that, now that we've read it in context, that.
Yeah.
Makes more sense.
Alright, okay, so we're gonna leave that.
Yeah.
And we're gonna, okay, go ahead.
So if I'm understanding correctly, we're going to utilize the. Objective from Winchester. We're gonna somehow also from the Winchester do the B two portion that talks about sort of the definition of. And then from Falls Church, we presume, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're gonna have that minimum of four hundred square feet of open space.
I think so, most of them have that.
Be the most common, I think one of them's less somewhere, but. And then also utilize the language in B and C that are for guest houses, clubhouses and whatnot, and also for the sidewalks that we just talked about.
Right. Um, and it looks like the number, there's a, in Falls Church, A, there's the number twelve again. That needs to go to ten.
Ten, okay.
And none of them really do the open space in proportion to the size of the. Cottage. Like I would have thought maybe you say point. Use either fifty percent or twenty-five percent of the size of. First stair, first floors. Right, of all the cottages, but that's fine, four hundred, for cottages, easy.
Do not qualify, okay.
So they, it is, that, um, central area would include, like if they have an internal sidewalk and the grassy space, okay.
Most of these are gonna have some sort of parking off the side, but you're still gonna have to get your groceries to the front door, so they are gonna have a walkway. Through that common area, a common open space, and sometimes they have carts and other things. That will help you with that, but yeah, you would expect, I would expect. Um, there to be a. Really substantial walk path of some sort. And in the Falls Church example that Kate just had up for a second, they even have a raised boardwalk to make it more accessible. As I recall, so most of that was a raised boardwalk that went straight down the middle of that development.
That is, um. The, those, that development right there, that one is done according to their, uh. Code, or the code wasn't done after, no, the code was done before in Falls Church.
They definitely had, and at that point, it was one of those temporary, um, pilot codes.
Okay.
That they had put together and they were supposed to reassess, I'm not sure that they reassessed, but yes, that was according to their. Drafted or adopted, but it was a pilot that was only good for a certain amount of time before they went back and reviewed it.
Alright, are we good on open space then?
Sounds like we are unless you have anything else.
Can we try getting through, I've had open space?
Um, just to comment on common open space, I've seen projects and been involved in projects where the com. The open space is often relegated to peripheral space. Because it's a requirement. But you put it over there and I think the language in here is strong enough to say that it's meant to be. A central space.
It says that in fact.
Yeah, so I think we're okay, but I'm just.
Central space.
I've noticed that in other projects.
Yeah, no, I hear you, I, I understand that, but I think we covered it.
Going a little counter to that is on that railroad property, like we do have an odd.
Yeah.
Shaped. Property, but they have a decent amount of open space, but it's not totally central. You know, I hate to throw out an imperfect lot.
No, no, I agree with you, Leslie, that, that's what caught my eye was that one, that it's kind of, um. So I, I don't know how we. Yeah.
Well, they don't have very much central space. Well, I mean, they do, they have some in between these houses on, near the parking and some. Over by the street and then they've got some in the corner.
Yeah, that's the one, Leslie's correct, that's the one that caught my eye and reminded me of other projects where it's kind of shoved over and not part of the central.
And it may be that if we did something like that here, they just have to eliminate one of the houses and have more.
No.
Open space.
Could I just point out one thing that I'm noticing now as you're bringing that up? In Falls Church in A, four hundred square feet, twelve, ten feet or less in width, the, between private open space and driveways do not qualify. And they don't have another sentence there, but if you go to. Port Townsend. Common open space shall have cottages abutting at least two sides, and that's common in some of the other ones. So maybe that's how they. Common open space, it was, sometimes you have cottage have to abut at least two sides, I think another one may have had.
Paige, were you on thirty-three or?
And it's on a couple of other ones, um, that's just the first one that jumped out at me, that. You have to have.
Right up here.
And Langley also is one that has, and shall have cottages abutting at least two sides. So that maybe helps you keep it a little bit more central, if you wanted to include a similar sentence.
You could add that to the B two from Winchester.
Okay. So is everybody okay with that, saying that the common open space has to have cottages on at least two adjacent sides?
Yeah.
Or budding at least two sides.
Or, yeah, I mean, that, that would be the minimum, you could take their first sentence, at least fifty percent shall have about a common space. And be within sixty feet of the nearest. I mean, that's a bit specific, but.
Would you, would you do, you need to say on two sides, so like if you look at the railroad cottages. And say they have two different open spaces, so on the far end, oh, you got up there at the point. I think in that which extends all the way over to. That gray parking area or whatever in front of the houses, I think that's actually okay. But then on the other side, you might need to eliminate one of the houses to get the appropriate. But point being, on that corner, if we think that's okay on that, on the. Menzila, then it wouldn't be a budding on two sides.
What I don't know about that layout is yes, that's dead space in that point of that triangle, but I don't know if. They met their open space requirement. they met their open space requirement with that boardwalk area down the middle or with some of the other space. I think we, we may be assuming that that dead space at the end is their open space, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay.
We do have really detailed site design for that, so we could look that up if you like.
Well, I'm just wondering, because we know we'll get odd sized lots, and so sometimes you hate to make it too specific, especially if we do have latitude through the CP.
But if we keep that in mind, because there was some language in there that said you have to hold by this, but if you did a PUD, then you get around some, so we may have that flexibility to adjust or accept a variance, if you will, if we make them do whatever the next step is, which in this case, going from a CUP to a PUD is quite a big step, but just keep in mind something like that for flexibility, because some of these did have some flexibility baked in.
Question, it, so for example, on, on the cottages where you're talking about the boardwalk that goes all the way down. To me, that would also equate to a sidewalk, and that, that you are allowed to count that as, as your common space, the sidewalks? Is, can include that?
As in, okay, went back to the third street cottages, they had that central space, but they also had a walkways that go through that central space, I can only imagine that that is included
Okay.
in their calculation.
Oh, and, and just looking again at the drawing on page thirty-three. Um, and that's linked to the shoreline, oh, we're not looking at shoreline. But they, in a way, that gives you some flexibility, the designer over, you know, at least X percent have to be sixty percent of the primary common open space. Anyway, I think we're on to something, the exact language is what we're trying to work out, so that you don't have peripheral isolated column space.
Yeah.
So I, I would go, if, if we wanted to go for this, what do you all think about all of the A on page thirty-four, at least fifty percent of the unit shall abut a common open space. And all shall be within sixty feet, walking distance measured from the nearest entrance to the shore, oh, that's getting. That's a little more than what Arnie suggested, on the common open space, you'll have cottages abutting at least two sides. What do you think, Arnie, on that A? The, more of that language.
That certainly pops up in several of them, and I can only imagine that a designer wouldn't have too much trouble having at least fifty percent of the cottages as a butt, and then have that sixty foot distance in there.
Yeah.
I, I, I like the fifty percent. And I think the sixty feet is reasonable. Because you want people to be able to access it.
Okay, so we need to figure out a way to, yeah, we can do that, we'll, we'll add that in to the things that we've already accepted, or, and then we'll put it together in some form or fashion.
Okay.
Um, I kind of like how, the one, I think I was just reading common open space, and then proximity, the, the next item is proximity to common open space, and then maybe we break it down to those two things and put it all together.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome, thank you.
I'm page thirty-four.
Alright, are we good for private open space? A little bit more time?
Yeah. You're right.
I'm going for it, we've cheated this the last two, so we need to make up.
I'm like, let's move on.
Ready to do one more, private open space?
Private open space, please.
Just gonna read from the Winchester one, because it's the first one that has the objective of each residential unit in a cottage housing development shall be provided an area of private open space, the private open space shall separate the main entrance to the cottage from the common open space to create a sense of privacy and shall be oriented to take advantage of solar orientation and other natural features to create a small but pleasant private yard area. The private open space may be separated from the common open space with a small hedge, picket fence, or similar visual separation to create a sense of separate ownership. And then section A there, each cottage unit shall be provided with a minimum of two hundred square feet of usable private open space separated from the common area spaced by a hedge or fence not to exceed thirty-six inches in height. B, no dimension of private spa, open space shall be less than eight feet. And I think a lot of other ones have a very similar, if not exact, or very similar language.
So, um, sorry, I'm just looking, so the pri, so in the objective, the last sentence, the private open space may be separated from the commons, open space and by, by a hedge or fence or whatever, and then each, in the, in A, it says each cottage unit shall be provided with the two hundred square feet separated by a hedge or fence. So, I would just say that those, that language needs to be parallel structure. One of them is may and the other one is shall. And they should both be one or the other.
That can end you up in court.
It's interesting, so it's saying that your private open space has to be in the front of your house.
I was wondering about the sides, yeah.
Or even, or even the back, I'm looking at this picture. It actually looks like some of them have more space in the back than the front, especially if you have the kind of a nice common space right in front. I don't know, might make sense to have it behind depending what the design is, but but I, but if that's normal to have, to require it to be in the front, that's fine. I guess that's how you get the, make sure you have the garden and all that.
I think there's always that, that transition that architects talk about, so you drive in, then you walk through the common area. You hit your gate or your hedge, and then you have that transition from totally public space, well, actually you're semi-public at that point, because you're within the confines of your development. But then you hit your hedge or your gate, and then you're in semi-private, because you're not inside your house yet. So I think you do want some of this private open space to be on the front.
Yeah, right.
And.
Or you then go to your porch to into your house.
Yeah, and you may have already said this, but those entrances are, the fronts of those houses are towards the other house, they're not facing the common area.
That could be their front.
Oh.
The, you see the little sidewalk that goes up.
Yeah.
And then the, the entrances. That's why that, that's their front yard.
Yeah, okay, right, I see.
So that's, they, they sort of cheated the system there.
But they, yeah, right, but they may work, okay, yeah.
Yeah, well, clearly, it, it's, it's working. A very interesting layout. So I would be a little bit concerned, I, I mean, I, I really like the objectives, um, I'm a little concerned about the solar orientation. And I guess, is, do we think that that might be because of ice and, you know, just safety issues?
I'm guessing solar orientation means just to get sun to your grass and not necessarily for solar panels, if that's maybe what you were thinking.
Be able to grow something.
So the private open space shall take, oriented to take advantage of solar orientation, okay, alright.
Right.
That's fine.
But that is, that is pretty restrictive, though.
Yeah, it could be. On the other hand, you don't want a bunch of just soil that you can't grow anything on, because it's always in.
Right.
I don't know. I mean, I guess they make shade mixes.
Yeah.
And there, there, honestly, there are plants that grow in shade.
Right, I mean, we're gonna limit a.
We need to have that in there.
Yeah, well, we actually limit a design.
So, alright, so create a sense of privacy.
Take advantage of natural features.
Yeah. Uh, so to create a sense of privacy to, well, and a sense, and a small but pleasant private yard area, how about that? So the private open space shall separate the main entrance to the cottage from the common open space to create a sense of privacy and a and a small but pleasant private yard area. And then the private open space shall be separated from the common open space?
Maybe.
Well, that's what it is right now, but we have to decide whether it's maybe or shall be, and then it needs to be the same in both sections. So the other, so Abington says shall be separated by a hedge or fence.
Yeah.
And Port Townsend is shall be. So I think that's, that seems to be the.
Especially if you're gonna say, or other similar visual separation, because it gets back to what Arnie was just saying.
So change the, change the shall, the may to shall.
Yeah.
But leave everything else.
Yeah.
The only other thing that I had to underline that I sort of liked in, um, I guess it's shoreline, which we're not supposed to like. Um, it does say required porch areas may be counted as private open space. Just, it's nice to distinguish, because that's that sort of interstitial space, what does it count as, if either counts as square footage or counts as perhaps private open space.
That's the shoreline one?
Sorry, that's, yeah, shoreline, page thirty-five and two C.
Yeah.
And I have to go back and think of what we've done for square footages, you know, we already addressed the porch, so the porch just needs to be consistent in both places.
They do, and actually, I was reading the porches on shoreline, and I I don't want to complicate things, and I'm not fighting for this, but I liked what they said in here. But that, that, again, it's almost misplaced. Not necessarily if, if it's counted as private open space, it's in the right location.
But, but you want your whole private open space to be a porch?
No.
No, so, yeah, so.
We will also get into a whole different section that deals with porches, just porches straight up, but it may be still helpful to signify whether or not it's gonna, how it's gonna count. We'll still get into how many square feet and at least six feet in dimension and all that for porches. But how are we gonna count porches, I guess, is the bigger question.
Yeah, I don't think we want to count as open space, I mean, can it be a kind of a a freebie, sort of like what we've done with, uh, in our zoning with the, what do you call the abutments, the, uh, you know, we added on to buildings at the five feet out, you can have these things, they don't count towards your.
Limited encroachments.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, right.
Well, maybe you just put a pin in porches for now, just to make sure that.
I think so, because
Figure out.
We've already said that they're not gonna be counted in the, in the square footage. So if they're not counted in the square footage and they're required and they're not counted. I don't know, we just, yes, let's put a pin in it.
At the shower, let's put a pin in it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll just make sure that when we come back as a draft, that it's addressed consistently.
Yeah, exactly. I do like the section of, uh, is this shoreline? Yeah. Um, that says that private open space shall be directly contiguous to an ex, accessed from each cottage. That seems important to be clear on.
Right.
Um, that's on page at the top of thirty-five. Number one. The second sentence. So what, so we need, uh, the square foot number, and then we need a
Yeah, right.
And a minimum dimensional number, linear feet.
Those are typical for, at least the ones that we're looking at now, yes.
Most, most are. Now that we do this, you can see, oh, they copied.
Yeah.
Yeah, Townsend one.
I also like that the perimeter landscaping that's required is not counted as private open space. Now with the perimeter, if we have required perimeter landscaping, which I assume we will, of some sort. That's gonna be in the public space, right, or in the, in the setbacks.
In, in the common area for the development.
And, and do we need to make it clear that the private open space is not in a setback? Or is it, or can it be?
Yeah, I don't see a distinction that says that it's not allowed in a setback.
Nope. But we, we said it has to be off the common area, is that what it was?
Uh, it doesn't, the private open space does not have to be off the common area, no, I don't think so.
I already said that.
Yeah, I thought we said, I thought.
Uh, private shall be contiguous to an access from each cottage. Let's see.
If we do the shoreline, and I'm on page thirty-five, two D, required perimeter landscaping shall not be counted as private open space.
Right.
That's the only one.
So, so the, the sentence, I see what you're saying. The private open space shall be separated from the common open space, I think what we need to say there to make it clear is that if it abuts the common open space, it shall be separated.
Yeah, and it.
Sorry, under the Winchester, uh, objective, the last sentence in that first paragraph, it says the private open space. I think it needs to say if the private open space abuts common open space, it shall be separated. And that takes care of it, so that, that's, that way, people who are in the common space know that you have a, a boundary that you can't go beyond. Okay, so, and then you were saying that, that the that it, it doesn't, it shouldn't be in the setback.
If you don't want the private open space to be in that setback, you can just utilize two D from the shoreline example.
Yeah, because the private open space, doesn't it have to be on their parcel that they own?
Would suspect, my mind when we're thinking that if you're gonna have common area, they're gonna hire a landscaper, or somebody's gonna take care of the perimeter, and perhaps that common open space in the middle, and that you're gonna be responsible for your yard and your house. So yes, you, I'm thinking of like a little small side yard that's yours, shown somehow on a plat or on a, um, deed or whatever you're purchasing as a condominium.
Yeah.
That's what I have it in my mind, so I'm not not so sure if you want these private space to extend into that perimeter yard, because that is.
So it could not, yeah.
Make it sort of really and make it a little bit more complicated on who owns what, and sort of delineate who's taking care of what, but maybe they figure that out.
So, can we just use, can we go back to this? I'm just looking at this, so, so would so for these, for these tiny homes. I'm just drawing a line on mine. Trying to get a sense of where it would be, so, so you're, you would not, the, the property would not own sidewalk. That, unless, except for the sidewalk that comes specifically to their house.
Rimeter side.
Not the perimeter sidewalk, but even the internal sidewalk would be public space.
I would, I would suspect so, yes. And then when it branches off to your lateral.
Right, that would be yours. So you might have a gate there or something.
A really mean pug.
What's that?
A really mean pug.
Yes, there we go. Um. So, so. In this example, I don't, I, I know, I'm not seeing four hundred square feet. Um, but.
Two hundred?
Yeah, who says that picture? Townsend? No, it's a four hundred.
I mean, not that, not that we're designing our. Coordinates for this, but.
You're right. It is potentially harder to see that much private open space in that layout.
Yeah. So, uh, so this is what I'm saying. We're going to have to go back and make sure that we can, that this is doable. We don't want to end up with Winchester.
And I think that we have some comfort perhaps, um, in that, yes, this is the Winchester two hundred feet. But it's also the two hundred feet that's in other ones that have been successful.
Well, I thought it was four hundred feet. Oh, no, two hundred feet. Okay.
Wait, what's two hundred feet?
Winchester private open space.
Okay, but what did we settle on? I thought we did say four hundred.
Um, we have.
That's the problem.
Right.
Yeah, not for private.
Yep, I'm, yes, I'm, yeah, yep. So two hundred square feet. And it has, it can have a fence around it. And. If there's a hedge, that doesn't count. If there's a public hedge. Around the edge and, and the setbacks do or do not count.
So far, if we just utilize the language that we've talked about from Winchester, it doesn't make a distinction. So I would think that they could utilize yard setbacks for their private open space. You could change that by adding two D. From Shoreline, which says required perimeter landscaping shall not be counted toward as private open space.
I, I think. I think I like that. That you, I mean, it does give some of these houses more, more of a perception of a yard. But it also means that they can't go in and cut down the trees if they're, you know, if they planted them in trees, for example.
So using. Our tiny homes. The example, the darker green perimeter. Would be. The perimeter landscaping that's not counted as open space.
Correct.
But we would also be saying whatever that twenty feet. Side yard setback, no, fifteen feet side yard setback. I don't know what's shown here.
Mm-hmm.
But that could not count. So some of these, if you could count some private open space towards the rear, it would be a fairly private rear yard.
Which.
So that might be counter to. Saying that you can't have private space in the perimeter.
Yep. Which I don't think we're saying we want to do. Um, because again, it depends on the specific site and then we want to be careful that we're not. Adding dimensions all the time that require this. Project, the site to grow.
Yeah.
Um, that's a good question.
Yeah, this one, this one's a little tricky.
For what it's worth, it does, it seems, I think, just quickly, that Shoreline's the only one that has that.
Yeah.
Additional requirement of not being in the perimeter.
So, but I guess what I, what I want to make sure is that the, the HOA. Has, has the responsibility for maintaining the outer edge, both for the. For the people who live in this unit and the neighbors and the people on the street so that, so that. So that I can't, you know, if I decide that, well, gosh, I really don't like that, whatever it is planted along the edge. I can't go in and cut it down on my, on my property because it's my property. And, and also, I mean, you can't require people on their private property to have a hedge. Correct? You don't have to have a hedge.
Well, we don't, but they can write whatever they like in the conditions and restrictions.
Right, but it, but we can require. Some sort of visual landscaping barrier.
Uh, and we do, but our landscaping requirements are fairly minimal. And most of the time, if I remember correctly, it's only between commercial and residential. So we're here, we're gonna, don't rely too much on a landscaping requirement between single family detached and single family detached.
Okay, it'll be more buffer around the perimeter. Just.
Yeah, I even mean, in that, in around that perimeter, we don't have something at all that, that requires them to put in. So if we want additional landscaping to sort of set off this particular cottage housing development, then we need to include that in here. So far, we've got yard setbacks of either twenty feet in the rear or fifteen feet on the side. If it's adjacent to a residential development. But I just caution you that we're not going to have something in a different section of the code for landscaping that requires too terribly much. Or if anything at all, for additional landscaping.
So are you saying that, are you saying that if we want to have. Landscaping along the perimeter between properties that we need to put that in here?
Somewhere in this.
Somewhere in this here, okay.
The only places, um, having to go by memory, um, that we have a requirement for a landscape buffer. That actually says one tree per every forty feet or whatever it is. Is only when we have commercial developments that are next to residential developments. And I think where we have, um, multi-family, so apartments next to single family. Here, we basically have single family next to single family. So we do not currently have a landscape requirement. That's going to require any landscaping around the perimeter of this to buffer the single family detached from adjacent, single family detached.
So I, I think that you might get neighbors saying this is like having a multi-family.
Yeah.
It's, it's definitely different. So.
Yeah.
Is it to the level of, but you're still trying, I think, the separation, because you're still trying to make the separation between this distinct thing. Which is more of a community and separate from what's around it.
Yeah, so. I mean. I, I understand and, and I'd like, I understand the principle and in some ways the simplicity of saying. The HOA is responsible for the darker green ba- barrier. Um, there's, there's a lot to that. And if we kept D, required perimeter landscaping shall not be counted as private open space. In effect, that tosses it into the HOA.
Mm-hmm.
It becomes part of the HOA. So that, um. That might be a, a simple way of. Doing it without getting into the specifics as to what the buffer would actually be.
Yeah.
I think that's what we're struggling with here, so. Um.
So, sorry, B, which B? Which B are you looking at?
Uh, B, did I say B?
Thirty-five?
On page thirty-five, um.
D as in dog. Yeah, gotcha.
D as in dog. Oh, yes, yes. My dog begins with a B, yes.
Um.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to have that, that D in there.
Yeah. Okay, so we're looking at Shoreline. We're looking at using. Um. Both one, is that, that I, or at least I have that circled. Each cottage shall be provided to private open space and shall be directly contiguous to an access from each cottage. Just for clarity's sake.
Yeah.
And then C. C is we've got a pin in, and then D as in dog, we've got required perimeter landscaping shall not be counted as private open space.
And also somewhere in there, you said two hundred feet.
And, right.
Somewhere in.
Each cottage unit shall be provided with a minimum of two hundred square feet of usable private open space separated. Well, period.
Period.
Hmm. And then we.
That's just out of, um, Winchester. One A.
So what is, they all have the same, um, on the dimensional space of less than six shall count towards open space.
Somebody had eight.
Yeah.
So that may, basically means you can't give me a four by four yard or a four by ten yard.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't give me a narrow strip. It has to be somewhat.
So, yeah, Port Townsend is eight. And Abington is eight.
I'm hearing correctly, we're going to use the Winchester objective. We're going to cut out that middle part of the second sentence that dealt with solar orientation and natural features. They're going to be the third sentence, if the private open space, then it shall. And then we will keep A and B there.
But we're taking out the, and in A, we're taking, we're ending the sentence with the word space.
Usable open, private open space.
And then we, and then we clarified that by saying that in the part, in the first section of Shoreline. The second sentence there, private open space shall be directly contiguous to and accessed from each cottage.
It did, oh, it says above about the separation, nevermind. Visual separation.
And it doesn't say exactly where next to the cottage, just that it has to be next to the cottage and accessible.
Okay, and then B stays at the eight feet.
Uh, yeah, eight feet, right?
Oh, and then the perimeter.
C and D.
So we're doing two hundred square feet?
Oh, no, sorry, C, C, we're not sure about. C, we've got a pin in.
I think we might put it in just as the placeholder with a question mark and then. Does that sound like a winner?
It sounds pretty good.
I think that's it. I think. Does anybody else have anything else on this particular item? Okay. So, um, do we need a movement, a move, a motion to close this section? All right. Um, okay, then I will open this up to public comment. Are there any members of the public who we have here visiting us today who would like to make comments on what we have been talking about? Seeing as nobody is looking my way, I'm going to close public comment and we'll move on to other business. Arnie, do you have a zoning and planning report for us?
Just quickly, um, we are interviewing candidates for a building official where you. Are trying to work towards succession planning and the eventuality that our building official retires. So internally, we have advertised and we've interviewed two today and one tomorrow. Just to go into an apprenticeship type program where they could, there's a lot of coursework, a lot of tests that you have to take to become a building official. But at least in the interim, under Steve's leadership or oversight, that person could at least start that coursework. And become an inspector in the interim.
Nice.
Oh, that's a big, big one.
And then the next item, and we have our. CDBG planning grant for a housing assessment windshield survey. That has been, um, provided to, or the contractor is Summit Design and Engineering. They let us know that on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth of this month, they will be in town doing that windshield survey. So they will be driving around to all of the residences in the city and from the street, not knocking on doors, not asking to go inside. But just from the exterior grading what they see as far as housing condition. And that will be helpful for, for data, for potentially putting together programs for rehab and whatnot. And then the last item, we had a city council held a work session, so sorry for stepping on toes here. But in that work session on Tuesday, there were four items, but three of them to mention is the proposed stormwater fee. That has been talked about for a bit of time, but was put on hold mainly for through the COVID time period. Also a sprinkler program, so commercial buildings, um, to potentially help fund in some way or support or subsidize. A fire sprinkler system that would then provide, um, safety for all of downtown. Because unfortunately, if one particular building or one building downtown, um, burns, then it could wipe out a good section of our downtown. That's something that council's considering. And then, um, another item or the last one I'm going to mention is a homeowner helper program. For people that are owner occupied, um, and they perhaps are having some issues with affording a roof. Or a paint job or other, um, improvements that there may be, um, some assistance from the city.
Right.
Things that are just being, they're in development and considered at this time.
What did you call that again?
Homeowner helper program is what the city manager had called his program in a previous, um, jurisdiction. And I know I'm going to say hamburger helper at some point, I apologize in advance. That's all I have.
I think it was said that night.
Thank you very much. Um, those are, those are great, great updates. Um, okay, so I see that. We have discussion of scheduling the remaining meetings. I did notice that we have some that bump up against some.
The question for you is, would you like to be here on Thanksgiving Day and the day after Christmas?
Wow.
These are traditional, I've learned now, these are traditional Arnie questions that come at this time of year.
Gosh, I don't have anything else going on on Thanksgiving. How about you guys?
Yeah.
That may not be the answer we were looking for. No.
Um, well, I, uh. How, how do we handle that? Do we, do we just cancel them? Do we?
Typically, there's just a realization that nobody wants to be here on those days and we cancel them. And we make it far enough in advance that we don't schedule anything or nobody has the expectation of. Wanting to be on an agenda on either one of those days.
Okay, um, I, well, I'm, I'm all in favor of that, but what do we need to have a, do we just?
I think a, just a general head nod would be sufficient for this particular item.
Yes, so it was Thanksgiving and what was the other one? Day after, day after Christmas?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay.
And that's very typical for the way our schedules fall for that second Thursday. I'm not sure when the last time we've met, that second meeting in November or December.
Okay. All right, do we have a city council report?
Uh, not really. So we did not meet last Thursday, but we did have this work session on Tuesday and Arnie did a great job summarizing it. And then at our next Thursday meeting, we'll have those two CUPs that, uh, planning commission discussed at the last meeting. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, and here we are, the end of our programming. I moved that we, uh.
I moved to adjourn.
Thank you, John. I second.
All right, all in favor?
I.
I.
And opposed. And we adjourned. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. We made good progress on that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.